Welcome one, welcome all. Called the informal session together. Mr. Schulman, Councilmember Schulman will not be with us today. He's not feeling well. But at this point, Mr. Manager, if we can go ahead and get going.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first briefing will be provided by our Parks and Recreation Team. It's about litter abatement. It's basically to give council an update, basically on the multifaceted way that the city addresses litter control on city parcels and the city route of way. All right, so the next person here will be Michael Kirschman, followed by Frank Fentress, and maybe other members of the Parks and Rec team.
Hey, welcome, Michael.
Good afternoon. Again, Michael Kirschman, Parks and Recreation Director. We're here to give a quick overview on the various ways that the city addresses litter on both city properties and, to some extent, private properties, and how does a multifaceted approach between our department, other departments, and volunteer groups. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Frank Fentress, and he'll give a thorough overview of what we do.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Frank Fentress. I lead the Park and Landscape Services Division for Parks and Recreation, and I am here to talk to you a little bit about litter abatement on city properties. We did a staff report back in August, and I think it was requested that we provide some additional information. So... It might not be turned on at this point. There we go. Okay. So, this is a multifaceted program. Parks and Recreation plays a small part. Public Works Waste Management, lots of volunteer groups, different volunteer groups. Code Enforcement enforces litter problems that are on private property, which can spill over onto public property if they remain and they aren't cleaned up in a timely manner. Sheriff's Workforce is involved, and all of our contractors that do maintenance work in the city. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the different ways we address litter, also the tiered approach that we have. Some places, we address litter at a little higher level because they've got different funding streams and different needs. And then I'll also give you a couple of alternatives to consider if you want to increase litter abatement efforts in the city. So, much of our litter is picked up during normal maintenance cycles. We mow thousands of acres, literally more than 10,000 acres are mowed on some cycle or more in the city. And before we do that mowing operation, we pick up litter. This is done by our contractors, our in-house staff. Sheriff's Workforce maintains some of these sites, and it's maintained, the litter's picked up on the same cycles that we do the mowing because we're moving on to the next sites. And then, in the wintertime, we also do litter rounds, just litter rounds, even when we don't have to mow, to make sure that the city still looks good in the winter months. This gives you an idea of what our maintenance cycles are for different facilities in the city, and it goes from 10 days on building sites to our divided roadways, which are 18 to 20 days. And some of our sites, like rural roadways and shoulders and parcels on some of the rural roadways, there, we don't have the resources to pick up litter every time we mow, but we certainly pick up litter if it becomes a problem and we see that it's a problem, like on Sandbridge Road, we just did Indian River Road the other day. It's important to note that when we are cutting grass at 18 days, it's not an ideal situation. It's what we can afford to do as a city to keep our roadways looking nice, but we get concerns every now and then that people are purposely mowing through litter. And I don't really believe we have as much of that going on as we have people looking for litter and 18-day grass, which is relatively tall, and they may miss some things. And then even once they get finished mowing, it's covered with clippings until we get some dry, until the clipping's dry and settle out, or we get some rain. So, they may inadvertently mow through some litter, but I don't believe anyone does it on purpose. We also have, in the Rites of Way, we have a litter control team, and Parks and Recreation has the only litter control team in the city. It's one full-time person and three or four part-time people or contracted employees, and they can respond to a bag of trash that falls out of a truck and gets run over by the next vehicle that goes by and spreads litter all up and down Princess Anne Road, which I've seen before. But they also go and take care of some of our higher litter areas. Harper's Road is one. Centerville Turnpike has lots of litter. Any place that's close to one of the transfer stations tends to have a little bit more litter. We also have Public Works Stormwater Operations, and they have a contractor that I just saw him sweeping on Dam Neck Road today. They sweep the roads, and they try to do this on a seven-times-a-year cycle, and this map that shows the blue is what they were going to do in a one-week period. So, that's a ton of roads that they're going to sweep in a one-week period, and they have this schedule online. And that's really important because anything that's on the streets, we get a heavy rain is going to end up in the stormwater system and then potentially in our waterways. So, at the higher end of the maintenance cycle, we've got the Oceanfront Resort and Town Center, and we've got a service down there at the resort called Block by Block, and this started during the pandemic and has continued since. But Block by Block works on Atlantic Avenue and the Connector Parks, and they pick up litter, scrape stickers, remove graffiti, and also interact with patrons seven days a week from very early in the morning until late in the evenings. And this is funded through the TIP program. And then Town Center has a similar program where they have ambassadors at Town Center during the busiest times of the year and picking up litter seven days a week. Public Works Beach Operations and Parks and Rec also pick up additional litter at the oceanfront, on the boardwalk, and on the beaches themselves. So, we're supplementing that program seven days a week in the summertime. And a lot of that work takes place between 2:00 in the morning and 7:00 in the morning, so you never even see it happen. And Public Works also takes care of trash on the beaches. So, they groom from First Street to 42nd Street daily during the tourist season, and they also groom Sandbridge Beach a little bit at a time so that it's all groomed once per week during the season. In addition to that, they place trash cans and empty trash cans on the beach, which is a huge benefit because there's a lot of trash generated on the beach. And this slide shows where those trash cans are on this very hard-to-see image, and each one of those circles might have as many as four trash cans in it, especially the ones that are closest to the steps. And that's how much trash, that's how many trash cans they need to collect all of the litter that's generated on the beach in a day. We also have dumping that we work very closely with Public Works Waste Management. We've got Jerry Brown here with us today. Some neighborhoods, we have recurrent dumping, and we go through those neighborhoods on a higher frequency than other neighborhoods, and things that they can't pick up with a grapple truck because it's leaning against a light pole or under some power lines, our teams will go in and help remove by hand. The, we also have just recently received funding to help with homeless encampment cleanups, and that's one of the worst encampments I've seen. I took a picture of a really bad one this morning as well. But they, we hire a contractor to come in and clean these places up because there's potential biohazardous wastes in these encampments with needles and things like that, so... But we try to get on those as soon as we have a place where the services have been provided, the people have been moved on, and we're able to clean the debris up. Volunteer support is really important as well, and we have small-scale volunteer support and large-scale volunteer support that I'm going to talk about. I have Kristi Rhines here from Waste Management. She is the Lausanne with the Clean Community Commission, which is a volunteer commission that really helps with larger cleanups and larger multi-group cleanups. And we also have Colin Jesse from Parks and Recreation. He's in our Parks Events and Programming Unit, and he handles the adopter programs, which are usually smaller groups and even individuals that adopt highways or adopt parks, and they pick up litter and track their efforts each year for us. And there's also other nonprofit partners. Lynn Haven River Now is a frequent flyer with our cleanups, and some commercial partner, Steel, does a Steel Day of Caring every year where they clean up a particular site. So, small scale, we've got some unsung heroes, and I want to mention two. Sandra Shanna Barger is on the Clean Community Commission, and she frequently calls us and says, "I've left some bags of litter by the entrance to Princess Anne Plaza." So, she's gone and she's picked them up, and she leaves the bags. She's got a waterway that she's fond of cleaning up out off of Independence Boulevard. She does at least one school site, and those types of efforts don't really get a lot of recognition, but they're really important to our program. And then, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but on Dam Neck Road, you'll see these bags tied to the little utility markers, and those bags have got litter in them. There's a, I believe it's a gentleman that walks that road. I think I've seen him once, but I was on my way to a meeting or something, and I couldn't stop. If anyone knows who it is, please forward their name, but he picks up litter every single week and ties it to these poles, and then our inspectors go and they collect all those bags and take them to the transfer station. So, these are unsung heroes. Adopter programs, I just mentioned, that Colin is involved in. We have walk-up volunteers. A ship may come into Norfolk, and they say, "We want to do a volunteer project," and they'll, we have 50 sailors that want to go clean up a site. So, we work with Colin or Ethan in my division, who handles these walk-up volunteers. And then Colin also handles cigarette butt receptacles, and cigarette butts are one of the highest-littered items that you find in our environment, and we're counting those and trying to keep them down in some of our larger parks. Small volunteer groups picked up, there was 1,200 volunteers in 2024, 607 cleanups, over 5,000 service hours, and almost 23,000 pounds of litter that these people picked up. Larger-scale projects, this can include things like Clean the Bay Day, International Coastal Cleanup, the Great American Cleanup. There's a student commissioner for the Clean Community Commission that has a program called Refresh VB, and it's students, organizing students to go clean up sites. And there's also other targeted environmental cleanups throughout the year. These are larger collaborative efforts, and this is what they did in 2024. 2,800 volunteers, over 7,000 service hours, and almost 25,000 pounds of litter. So, between those two slides, it was about 50,000 pounds of litter picked up by volunteers, which is huge. And I just want to talk about this one event that's been recent and pretty significant. So, this is Sunday, September 8th, 2024. 114 volunteers teamed up to clean up the city's Scarborough Square neighborhood. Kayakers took to the water while others walked the neighborhood. In two hours, these volunteers collected 4.4 tons of trash. This incredible turnout is thanks to Police, Community Lausanne Officer Kevin Boda. Captain Clark from the 1st Precinct is also in that image. Parks and Recreation, Public Works Waste Management, Lynn Haven River Now, YMCA of Southampton Roads, Tidewater Council of the Boy Scouts, PAC 490 and 490G, and Scarborough Square Civic League, the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission, and Keep America Beautiful. This type of collaboration and community support is really what it takes to keep our city looking as clean as it does. And our city is pretty clean. This is our litter index. One is considered the best, four is considered the worst. These are the categories and the locations that are scored, so this is an average across the city, and you can see that our litter index is 1.4, which for a city our size is pretty significant. It's almost exceptional. You can see that it slipped a little bit probably during the pandemic, and we're back on track again. And then, where does our litter come from? There's multiple sources. I'm sure some of it is purposely thrown out of vehicles or purposely deposited or left by somebody in a place where it shouldn't be. We also know that there's quite a bit that inadvertently blows out of trucks and trailers that are traveling around the city, and as you get closer to the transfer stations and the landfill and the private dump over on Centerville Turnpike, you'll see that the litter kind of increases, and those are some of the areas that our litter team focuses on to try to keep them looking good. 55-mile-an-hour roadways, you tend to see more litter because, again, it's blowing out with a higher frequency. And then, there's also private property sources, and when you have a dumpster that's like this in a private commercial development that's near a school or a park, and we have a nor'easter that blows for three days, you can be assured that some of that litter's going to end up somewhere where it's not supposed to be. And it's important to note that, especially in our city, uncollected litter can wind up in our storm drain pipes, and the first time we get a heavy rain, that's going to end up in the waterways. So, here's one consideration for improving the services that we're already providing, and we could add another litter team. And if we add another litter team, this would give us the ability to respond to two emergencies, two litter emergencies at once, and we would also be able to put more sites that aren't frequently, as frequently visited by maintenance teams on a, on a cycle so that we could take care of that litter. The cost would be approximately $250,000 annually, and that's for one full-time person and three or four contract people, as well as we would need to pay for a truck to get the, to get the program going, and then that program could continue for future years at around $215,000 a year. And then another option, and we don't really have a cost associated with this one, your imagination can run wild, but enhancing the anti-littering educational campaign so we can boost more participation. And Waste Management already works with Ask HR Green and 16 other localities on the You Literally Can campaign, which has social media content, 30-second video, a jingle produced by WHRO, and it reminds residents to pick up litter where they see it. Right now, it's funded through a competitive grant. So, increased funding could help have a better campaign and maybe get more residents and citizens involved in, in the volunteerism. Litter kits are available from Virginia Beach Libraries, and litter kits are also available from Waste Management. And with that, I will be happy to try to answer any questions.
I often talk about how clean our city is, and sometimes it's, I always say it's kind of like your house. If it's clean, you don't really notice it, but when it gets dirty, you really notice it's dirty. And, and we take it for granted, I believe, how clean it is, what a great job everyone does, the volunteers, the staff, and everyone together. And it's, it really, and it sends a message too, and I think that adds to one of the reasons why we have a low crime rate, the broken windows thing, and because people want to keep it up and keep it nice. I do have a question. On the trucks that do the street cleaning, do they suck that, vacuum up the stuff, or where does the stuff go then when they clean the streets?
I've seen them vacuuming it up, yes, and I believe they have to take it to the landfill once they vacuum it up.
Good, good, good. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Hey, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Fentress, and I especially want to thank you for highlighting the Scarborough Square cleanup, which was a partnership with many departments in the city and Lynn Haven River Now and the Boy Scouts and the Scarborough Square Civic League principally. And I think they took like four tons of, 4-point-something tons of trash from that area. Is that, that number you've recalled to?
4.4.
4.4 tons of trash. Scarborough Square is a very sensitive neighborhood, as you know, in terms of littering, in terms of waste management. I don't want to put you on the spot by asking you what solutions you think might be to address these issues, and I've been there and I've seen things there that are just not common in other neighborhoods. And, and I would be interested in having a future conversation with you about how to continue to remediate the littering and trash issues that are pervasive throughout Scarborough Square, really impacts the quality of life in that neighborhood and upsets a lot of people, I think rightfully so. Fortunately, we have a beautiful park there that remains in great shape. A lot of it is human behavior, bad human behavior, and that's a difficult thing to regulate and control for sure, but the neighborhood is really detrimentally impacted by the littering issues they experience there and really are asking for the city to help with that. So, I'd be interested in, in having a future conversation with you about how we can work together to, to find ways. And I wonder if it'd be possible, for example, to do like a pilot program. So, in other words, maybe instead of adding a position, maybe could we do a focus program on a particular area like Scarborough Square or in other places too, and see how that goes, rather than, than do the, you know, the additional FTE and all the equipment that goes with it? That's one question I have.
Well, we would, we would certainly welcome the dialogue, but I will tell you that we provide a higher-than-normal level of service in Scarborough Square, Lake Edward. There are several, several neighborhoods that Waste Management provides more cycles of pickups, especially for bulky items, and our teams also go in and do things that we don't do for other neighborhoods, but we would be happy to discuss how we might be able to enhance that program as well.
I appreciate that. And then, I know one other issue that a constituent has raised with me regularly is around, I know you said you don't have the staff to pick up the littering in every instance, particularly that you mow, but that really, when, when people see that they mow over trash, it really annoys people. And I don't know how you, I don't know how you resolve that, but I get a lot of feedback about that, actually. You know, the, the chopping it up and then leaving it there really bothers people. So, I don't know, maybe we could partner with the sheriff's office, and I know they do some work, and, and get those things cleared with the big trash hives before they run over them with the mower. I don't know. Tough, it's tough.
Again, we hear that more often than I believe is truly the case. I've gone out and responded immediately to concerns about that and haven't seen what's been described to me, but I'm sure that some litter gets run over. There's no doubt about it. And a lot of what you see is not necessarily city property, it's beside city property, it's the contractor that's working on a commercial property or, you know, some other property. So, we...
That's an important distinction. Thank you.
Yes, and we really do train our employees to pick up litter. I mean, it's part of the maintenance cycle is to pick up the litter before you mow.
Thank you.
Just back to the street, the past 10 times. I do get asked about that quite regularly, is what is the, and I know you kind of hit on it, Frank, and I might have missed it. Is there a number of times that the neighborhood could expect to see them in the course of a year?
According to the information that's on the website, it's, the goal is seven cycles per year.
Oh, so seven times.
Yeah, they hit each street about seven times a cycle. I think that's the cycle, is about hit each, hit each street about seven times.
That's good, because that is a pretty frequent question.
Hey, Amelia.
Just want to thank you so much for this presentation. I had a friend come from Connecticut, and they mentioned how clean our city is. So, those, you know, hearing these is important because the cleaner it is, the healthier it is for all concerned. And you did leave one little group out that comes into adopt the street of Virginia Beach Beautification Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
You forget, you're on that too.
Yes, they adopt spots too.
Yes, they adopt spots too. So, this is important. Their logo, there is beauty is good business.
Beauty is good business.
And it certainly shows. Thank you all for what you do.
Yes.
Hey, anyone else? And thank you all, you know, you definitely contribute to, you know, giving us the high quality of life that we have right now.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be given by Brett McKenzie, Legislative Affairs Director, it's to kind of go, it's to go over the draft legislative agenda to seek council feedback, to see if there's anything council wants us to add or if you want us to amend the legislative agenda before council takes it up for consideration in the next voting meeting.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. We appreciate a few moments of your time today for the next step in the legislative agenda process. We are before you today to get your final input into the draft agenda with the goal of adopting the final agenda at the next voting meeting on November 12th. So, at the conclusion of today's presentation, we are looking for guidance on any issue that you would like to see added, changed, or removed. You'll see here that we remain on track for adoption on November 12th. As a reminder, we'll have one final public hearing on November 12th dealing with the proposed charter change. The last time I presented at the conclusion, or towards the conclusion of that meeting, there was consensus to add two items that came from the Resort Advisory Commission. One was to require the use of low-impact utility markings, and the second one was to bring back the creation of a local ordinance that would help eliminate some of the continuing nuisance issues that our retailers and folks see down at the oceanfront. You'll remember that this has been included in at least the last two legislative packages, maybe three, I'm not exactly sure, but we had it in last year and was unfortunately not successful. In addition, the Short-Term Rental Task Force has completed its work, and they emailed all of us three recommendations that they are going to put in their final report. The first one was a recommendation that the council requests that the General Assembly give localities the authority to require S. short-term rental platforms to remove non-compliant short-term rental listings. So, this would basically work as either the Commissioner or Revenue or our Planning Department could send a list of non-compliant short-term rentals to one of these large platforms, asking them to be delisted, and if the, and then the platform would be required to either delist them, or they would suffer some sort of fine. This is taken out of a piece of legislation last year. There was a small piece of a larger piece of legislation, so we think it's an interesting idea to try and tackle some of the challenges that we've had. The second one, recommendation is that they would like to include the 2023 and 2024 STR policy statement. They just want us to continue that. We captured a lot of that in our policy priorities, so I think we're in good shape on that one. And then, finally, they are recommending that we bring back the same request that we had in last year's agenda that would allow localities to increase the fines that are available for the violation. So, as you know now, the first violation of an ordinance is $250, the second one is $500, and it kind of stays at that $500 level. Last year, we proposed $500,000, and then $1,500, and it stayed at that $1,500. It's been a long time since that has been updated, and so, you know, you can kind of look at it as just updating that policy. As a reminder, if you would like to add any of those recommendations from the Short-Term Rental Task Force, or add or remove any additional items from the legislative package per the policy that you all adopted last year, we'll take either the agreement of the mayor or three members of council. So, we have all the slides that we previously presented to you, available for review and discussion, if you have any questions or direction that you'd like to provide us. But, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you now to facilitate any council discussion and direction for Andrew and I.
Mayor Dyer. It's come up through the public forums that we've had about if we truly want to change our charter, that we have to put the item before the people in a referendum. We hear it, we've heard it. Is there any truth to that so we can intelligibly speak to our constituents?
I'll let the city attorney speak to the, to the law that thinks this.
The Virginia Code provides two methodologies for a locality to request an amendment to the city charter. One is via a referendum, and the other simply requires a public hearing, which is why we conduct the public hearing for the charter changes separately from the public comment on the rest of the agenda. So, there is no requirement, although you can do a referendum, there is no requirement that a referendum be conducted in order for the locality to request a charter change.
Thank you.
Barbara.
You have at your place the resolutions that the Farm Bureau adopted this year. This just has to do with issues at all, but the one that is highlighted really talks to this issue of changing our, as they phrase it, local initiative to support holding a public referendum prior to requesting a charter change, establishing our voting system for electing our city council members. And I was, I'm uncertain because in our agenda package, last week, we had the specific areas that are being changed with this charter change in our charter and all that language, whereas what we have here is just the basic thing, you know, we want to support the 10-1 system. What's going to go to the General Assembly?
Yes, ma'am, the, and your draft legislative agenda that we have shared with you previously, the exact language that will be proposed was included in that. you previously, the exact language that will be proposed was included in that. It's obviously a few pages long and difficult to put in a PowerPoint slide, but we've previously provided that to you and I can, uh, I have a copy right here in front of me as well that we can get to you.
I've got it, but I want the General Assembly to have it. But what I'm really concerned is that we are taking out the verbiage that requires a voter referendum to change our voting system, you know, has been in the charter. And I think the last wording that was changed was in, according to this, that's still in there, was when it was changed in 96 by the General Assembly because they mandated that we have another voter referendum because of the charter change that we were considering at that time. But I just feel very strongly that our charter should specifically require that in order to change our voting system, there has to be a voter referendum. When we talk about having voter rights, but if you're not going to let people vote, what good are voter rights? Uh, and to take away the requirement that people vote on their election system, to me is just the epitome of taking away voting rights. And I know what happened in 96 that caused the General Assembly to put this language in our, in our charter, to have another referendum in 96 because we had had one, I guess it was in 94 or 95, that the people were uncertain about what they, what it meant. And when people realized how many votes they lost, they were furious. And with this change that we have done with whatever action we took to just say, well, we've got to have this 10-1 system, which I think came out of that legal case. That's when I remember hearing about it first. We took away the right of people to vote for 19 positions, nine city council members and 10 school board members. And when you take away the people's right to vote for 19 positions that they had been voting for, and you just do it, to me, that's, that's not the way we're supposed to operate. I think if we're going to do something as significant as changing our voting system, it should be, we should be required to have a voter referendum. That's what is coming out of our charter. And, I think it should be worded very specifically so the General Assembly knows exactly what they're doing, uh, if, if they're going to follow what, just a simple statement of changing it to 10-1, to me is not enough.
Hey, Dana?
Just if I could bring some historical perspective, in 1994, there was a referendum that was a, a resident initiated referendum. And that question actually had two prongs to it. First prong was equally sized districts. So at that time, you had the old magisterial districts. So say Kempstil might've had 165,000 people in it and Blackwater might've had 400. And so one issue was equally sized districts by population. And then the second issue in the question was, um, basically wards, so elected by and from the district. And so that referendum question was answering the affirmative in, in May of, um, 1994. And then the 1995 General Assembly, the charter was changed to affect the equal sized by population districts, which is why the city council had to redistrict in 1996. But then secondarily, in 1995, the General Assembly embedded this piece in the city charter that says, in, in essence, the city council had to craft a question in 1996 for the May election on the question of, do we want the districts to be elected by and from, um, within the district? So a ward system. And so that question went to referendum in 1996. It was answered in the negative. And so that's, in, in essence, why this language is still in there is because the General Assembly, although they add language often, they don't come back and clean it up. So in essence, this is 28-year-old language that just was never removed.
I know. I sure wish Clancy was still here. He could tell us all about it because I don't know when the public has been so upset as they were when they realized what they had done with that two-part question, uh, in that first. And, and that's why I think the General Assembly took the, the extreme to word this charter change for us, but very clearly, that's what they wanted at that time. And yes, that is old language and so forth, but I think that the, the language that required a voter referendum is, is the, is the key. And so to take away all reference to having a voter referendum from our charter is not what I think we want to do.
Well, I will note, there's two other references to referendum in your charter. Uh, one is if the city council wants to put an advisory referendum on any proposed ordinance, the city council may do so. And then secondarily, there is the piece about the resident initiated, uh, referendum process, which, for instance, in 2016, the, the light rail referendum was won by the, the residents brought that one forward. So those two remain in there. And then secondarily, as Mr. Stiles pointed out, there is the possibility of doing a referendum election on a proposed charter change in lieu of doing the public hearing process. So that's also available to the city council.
Right. Well, I'm just saying what my feeling is, is that it ought to be in our charter that we're going to change the voting system. There has to be, that's my position on that issue. Another thing that, about the, um, packet, uh, and last week, at the Plannin District, the, uh, Plannin District, uh, voted on the regional legislative package and, you know, done a good job of, I think, coordinating with that a lot. But, and Josh mentioned at, at that meeting, and I'll just let him know that I'm representing what he said too, in this issue of education and state funding, and of course, we say in hours, I don't see here, here it is, uh, the city of Virginia Beach supports efforts by the General Assembly to provide additional funding to support school construction as construction costs continue to increase. It's critical that localities have support from the Commonwealth to continue to modernize our school facilities. And Josh, at the meeting last week at Plannin District, started to talk about the, um...
I believe you mentioned the lottery funding. Yes, ma'am.
And I think we ought to get very specific in this. I, it's sort of one of those things that sticks in my craw. When, when the people voted to allow Virginia to have the lottery, there was their very distinct promise that it was going to be for education. And I think the intent and the expectation was that it was additional education money. And for the first year or two, I think it was. And that was when Virginia Beach started allocating all of the money from the lottery to school modernizations. And I know Creeds was one of the first that, that did it those first couple of years. That's how we did those. And that's what started our modernization program because we thought we were going to have this lottery money coming every year that was going to allow us to do these modernizations. But then, I think what has happened is that the lottery money has just sort of been absorbed by the state and is just a part of what they would be doing with education anyway. I don't think it's any longer additional money specifically designated. And I think, I think the lottery money ought to be very different from what the state is sending. That should be additional money, uh, for education and dedicating it to, uh, uh, construction costs for modernizing school facilities, I think would fit every locality in the state because everybody is faced with these same issues. So I would really like for us to get specific and start saying, hey, give us our lottery money back and, and make it all in addition to what the state is going to be giving, uh, for education out of their budget. It's supposed to have been icing on the cake and sort of got absorbed and it's just a plain cake now.
Can I say something else?
Barbara's absolutely right. What they, it, it came, everyone was promised this money was going to go for education. People voted for the lottery and then it was like a bait and switch. They supplanted it. They, we got the money, but they took other money away. So it was supplanted. So there was really no plus-ups as, as our budget director always says, plus-ups. It was not a plus-up. They did have the lottery fund that we, uh, were able to use for very low-cost interest for school construction. So, but I don't, I don't even know if we have that anymore or not.
I believe that that still exists. The terms have not, uh, my understanding is that the terms have not been as competitive as what the city and the schools can get other, otherwise. And so they haven't utilized it as much as maybe they did in years past.
That doesn't do us any good either. I guess it's the bottom line. So I, I would support what you're talking about. It's a good idea.
They might not like it, but, but I think, I really think that's what people expected when they voted for the lottery. This was going to be additional money. And I think we, you're right. It was just absorbed and supplanted the money they were going to be giving. And maybe that's why they had such a big surplus last year in their fund. But anyway, I, I think this, this would, uh, the, the regional legislative agenda talked about the fact that, you know, the, the smaller localities just really have a tough time meeting this. So I think this is something that would fit every locality in the state. And I think we would have the locality supporting this. I'm not so sure the General Assembly would be happy with it, but.
Maybe we can get BML and VACO to support it as well.
Yeah.
Because they're for education.
Thank you, Barbara. Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie, for the presentation. Uh, so two things. I want to come, the second thing is the education discussion just had. But on the short-term rental, the three recommendations from the task force, I realize, uh, colleagues, that you all have not, we have not been presented from the task force. So I guess we can't ask any of you all to support, uh, me in, in sponsoring any, uh, one of these three recommendations. So when will we, Mr. Manager, hear from the task force?
Depends on if the council's agenda is pretty packed for the rest of the year. But if council wants it on the agenda, we can put it on the agenda. But in, we don't need the, um, the Short Term Rental Task Force to add it to the agenda. If council wants to, per your policy, if the mayor endorses it, or three council members are on the table wanting to get on the agenda, we could add those items. So circling back to the school item, I heard, um, so I heard Mr. Remick is in support of it. The vice mayor is in support of it, and Ms. Henley, and now, um, Dr. Ross Hammond. So I think we'll amend that to specifically address the, the lottery funds to be the source for that.
For school construction.
For school construction.
Solely for that.
That's good.
Sorry. But to Mr. Remick, if this is something that the council wants to add, they can just have the discussion and give us guidance so we can include it in the ordinance that we'll present it to you all on November 12th.
I'll be calling you all.
Jennifer?
No, I want to add my support to the legislative agenda as is particularly around the 10-1 system because we have rehashed this for how many years now? And how many opportunities have we had for public input? And when my husband came and spoke at city council during the public hearing and he mentioned, when he was on the body, there was an opportunity for a referendum that was voted down. So there have been opportunities for a referendum that was voted down. There was opportunities for public input since then. And the research from the UVA Weldon Cooper study indicated legally in terms of a pathway, like if we were to put forward a referendum to ask what, in terms of what are even the options for us to go forward because of the change to state law. So I don't want to muddy the waters and make it seem as if the body doesn't want to hear from the public on this issue. I think that, um, considering the constraints from the previous council to now, we have put forward opportunities to hear from the body, I'm sorry, to hear from the public. And, um, I just wanted to add that component and, um, indicate my support that we continue on, um, with the 10-1 system and asking for the change, which should have been a procedural process this last session. I do believe it got politically muddled. And so it's, um, we'll see what happens this time around.
Barbara?
The reason we did not have a voter referendum at that particular time, and because we were also talking about our stormwater bond referendum, and it was the, that election in '20 was at the height of the pandemic. And we couldn't have any meetings. We couldn't have any debates. We couldn't have an opportunity to get people together to talk about it. And so we decided that that was not the time to have the referendum. It should be the following year, which is what we did with the bond referendum. And look how successful it was. But in the meantime, the General Assembly, unbeknownst to the city council, or at least the full body, had that, uh, issue introduced in the General Assembly, which most of us did not know was going to be introduced until it was already introduced. And so we didn't know that that was going to happen before, to, to preclude a, a bond referendum in '21. So the reason we did not have the bond referendum in '20 was, was the height of the pandemic. We couldn't get more than 10 people together to talk about anything. We couldn't do the, the public information that needed to be done.
I was brought up in August.
Dave Sabrina?
I was brought up in August.
So, yeah, I recall the discussion. I recall that referendum being discussed amongst the body. There were some people who wanted to use the pandemic as an excuse, um, but that's not something that I supported. I always supported a referendum for the people to make that decision. But during that time, it was not supported by the majority of the body, for whatever reasons they had. The pandemic was used to say that, um, it was not a good time to do it. But if I recall, when people turned out and they voted, and they voted in record numbers. So we could have had it then, but the body didn't support it. So, uh, an effort was made, but it was shot down. So I certainly do, as Councilmember Rouse has said, do want to continue on this path because there had been opportunities for the public to speak. The body has had an opportunity to provide a referendum as well. Didn't choose to do that. And so, um, I support the legislative item for, to be presented to the General Assembly.
Anybody else at this point? Okay, thanks a lot, Brent. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be provided by Kevin Chadleair, our budget director. This is to give council an overview of the, the proposed CIP retreat that we plan towards the end of January. So this isn't a presentation that's going to go into the specific issues of the, the specific CIP sections. Just to give you a general overview of some of the things that we're seeing, some of the things that we're going to like to get from you in terms of guidance, the CIP retreat, but also to lay out the framework of the CIP retreat as well.
Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, as the city manager, um, set the stage, I'll just jump right into it, um, with the next slide, uh, being some of the information I'm going to be providing in the upcoming slides, some additional background information and factors currently impacting the CIP, uh, as well as a recap of the last three years and the development of the CIP and the tools that were implemented by city council and the guidance that was provided, as well as the balancing approach used to develop those operator, those capital improvement plans. Um, then we'll jump to a quick high-level overview of the existing FY25 adopted CIP. And then, as the city manager said, uh, talk about some, um, formatting and timeline and request, uh, for city council to assist in doing some groundwork for the, um, discussion to take place at the retreat focused on the CIP in the month of January. Uh, so city council, certainly not surprised, uh, that inflation is certainly a topic of discussion regarding impact of, on the CIP. So for a quick reference as to what this visual here is showing, typically inflation's talked about in terms of the increase or the change of the cost in all goods and services. So this is drilled down a little bit further and this is looking specifically at the construct, cost of construction materials. So I thought this was important to, as we're talking about the impacts on the CIP. And so this data spans back from January 2018 through July 2024. And the reason for this is that you can see from January 18 through April, um, 2020, really, it was relatively stable, right? So that red line going across represents zero. So anything above that line is an increase. Anything below that line is a decrease. And this is based on monthly data. And then you can see that rapid increase or that rapid, um, change that occurred above that line, um, during the pandemic and in this post-pandemic environment. Large port, part of this is just simple supply and demand, right? So at the beginning of the pandemic, supply chain issues were, um, a driving factor. People couldn't get the cost goods and materials. The demand for those never went down. So that resulted in the cost of those and the production of those going up. And so, um, whenever you look at it, you can see in the more recent time, inflation in this, in terms of construction materials has come down. But the important thing to note is that inflation's a compounding measure. So, um, to help with the visual of that, I've taken the same information and just displayed it differently. So I put this on an index and we can work through a theoretical construction project. So say back in January 2018, you were doing a home, a, a home project, uh, and you went to the local hardware store and that project cost you $100. local hardware store, and that project cost you $100 in goods and materials. So you can see that data point in January 18. Following the real impact of inflation is that blue line going across. So you can see that it began, those costs of goods and materials started increasing during the pandemic. And to do that project at the height of the pandemic, or in January or April of 2022, that same project would have cost you roughly $227. So you can see it has, in fact, come down, but it's not to the pre-pandemic level. So inflation's still incredibly high, resulting in construction projects having inflated costs from where they were prior to the pandemic. And for those that are curious, that orange line going across there, that represents the historical average growth of this measure of CPI related to construction materials. So historically, it's grown at 3.15%. So if you take that out and you measure that over time, if we had not had that heightened sense of inflation in this field, that same construction project would have cost you roughly about $128 in materials. So seeing this and that rapid growth, city council really put into place at the request of staff, it was an unknown as to where inflation was going to end or where it was going to go, where the ceiling was going to be and where the floor might come back to. So city council took an approach of kind of a wait and see, let's, before going in and cutting the CIP and the out years of the CIP, let's go out to the market and see what the bids on these construction projects are. And so you can see if they had done it, if council had done it at the height of the 227 mark there, there's a possibility that they could have overcut, or we would have overcut the CIP, whereas reality inflation's come down since that high point. So as I said, even though city council kind of put this wait and see, let's let the market determine, it doesn't mean that there wasn't steps being done and guidance being provided. So for example, as a part of the FY22, '23 CIP process, city council authorized Section 14 of the CIP ordinance, which basically allowed some discretion to be made whenever bids are received that are higher than the budgeted cost for a project. If it can be attributable and pointed to as inflation being the driving factor of that, transfer authority was provided for the city manager to be able to transfer within the section from donor projects, as long as the projects that were the donor projects were not negatively impacted in terms of construction timeline. Additional guidance was followed up and provided at city council, the 23, 2023 retreat, which they really gave direction and guidance to focus more on the maintaining of the existing infrastructure with a lower prioritization of the new facilities and infrastructure to expand. They, city council reinforced this as part of the 24, 2024 retreat, as well as providing additional guidance to take construction timelines, matching funding obligations into consideration, as well as the overall age the project had been reflected in the CIP. So in implementing those, the last couple of CIP processes have resulted in a need to make some reductions in some part of the CIP to meet addressing more soon-to-be needs and related projects that are going out to construction sooner. So in the 23, '24 process, it resulted in the delaying or elimination of nine CIP projects where $60 million was needed to redirect and reallocate to projects that were going out the door sooner in terms of the construction timeline that had grant match requirements related to VDOT. As part of the 24, '25 process, three of those projects that were previously delayed or funding was redirected from, received a portion of the funding back. $30 million was allocated back out to three of those projects. However, just staying focused on those three projects, if you were looking at the CIP today, you would find a balance to complete on those projects still remains at $73 million. And then also something that's been occurring over the last couple of processes is we're aging cities. So what we're finding is infrastructure is failing at different points, resulting in a need to prioritize some of that earlier in the CIP. And we're having to find donor projects for that as well. An example of that is the central plant loop here at the municipal complex that burst last year. Public Works determined a need to replace that sooner rather than later. And so the donor project for that was the beach maintenance facility project. So funding was redirected off of that to primarily fund the central plant loop project. High-level overview of the adopted CIP. So a total of 345 CIP, city CIP projects are included. That's not inclusive of schools. Of those, 298 are fully funded, and 47 of those reflect a balance to complete on them, meaning additional funding would be needed in the future years to fully fund them. For quick context and environmental scanning, Chesapeake has about 257 CIP projects in total. City of Norfolk has 117 CIP projects, and the city of Richmond has 70 CIP projects, not inclusive of schools. So you can see city of Virginia Beach certainly has a lot more projects than Hopper at 345 total projects. Another portion of the CIP documents referred to as a request of not funded list. So this is a cumulative list of all the projects where additional funding requests were made. However, due to various reasons, funding limitations, they would not be able to be funded as part of the budget process. So that total amount is a little over $627 million. It's important to note that those are just the projects that funding requests were made on. If you were to go and tally up the other projects, the, you would find that there's an additional close to $800 million in balance to complete reflected on some of these projects. So the reason that that's not reflected on that list is some of those projects are larger in scale and nature, and the section manager, like for example, in roadways, Public Works doesn't feel that the I-264 Independence Interchange, which is close to $300 million project, would fully be funded by the city. That'd be a partnership with VDOT. So a request wasn't made for that. But if you went to that project detail sheet, you would see that as a balance to complete. And then there's some other knowns in terms of not being able to account or calculate the balance to complete on a few projects. So examples of those to be determined are the partnership with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the Regional Coastal Stormwater Management, the ALIDA Building or the Law Enforcement Training Academy, and the ITA Master Plan that was briefed to city council a few weeks ago. What would that look like in terms of if it's staggered in? Is there a partnership arrangement that could be made in the future? So just a lot of those don't have dollar amounts, as it would be really to be determined. So those are the projects that we can look at the CIP in terms of point and tally up in terms of calculating a balance to complete cost or additional funding need. But there are others that we're seeing that are coming in where bids being received are over the appropriate amount for the projects. A few examples, city council certainly were familiar with these, Elbow Road 2B and C, the 531 Memorial, and the Winston-Salem Avenue. So each of these were bid out multiple times with each of the bids exceeding the budgeted estimate. And then earlier, I noted several transfers that had taken place, just for context of that and city council action over the course of FY2023, '24. Total transfer between projects was little over $35 million, just to keep projects continuing to go in terms of getting them out the door to construction. So kind of in current reality, based on the programmed amount in the CIP and funding availability, there's really insufficient funding at this time to do everything, deliver all the projects in the timeframe expected of city council and the public. So somebody might hear that and go, well, wait a second, the CIP's $5 billion. How, how can that be? Well, there's plenty of money. Well, it is true. If you looked in the CIP, you would see this is the program six-year CIP. You can see in the thick red box there, total program CIP is little over $5.4 billion. What's important to note, though, is in that thinner red section, that's years two through six of the CIP. Those are not appropriated funds that are available to go out the door and execute and start spending. Those are programmed out for planning purposes. And when I say planning purposes, don't get me wrong, there's a plan to fund those based on charter bond limitations, program bonds, and pay-go and fund balance through various dedicated sources and general fund contribution. So each year is balanced. However, it's for planning purposes. The real year of focus in budgeting or approving the CIP is the year one appropriation. In this case, the 2025 year, which was little over $418 million. And then looking at the appropriations to date that exist from previous contributor appropriations to those projects. So whittling down to a little bit deeper dive in that year one appropriation of $418 million, similar to walking city council through the myth of the billion-dollar budget during the retreat, you can perform the same exercise here in that you can see up to the top, the 418.5 million. There's several revenue sources within the CIP, within that appropriation, that have to be used for specific purposes. So for example, with the enterprise funds, the water and sewer fund, the stormwater fund, those are backed by the ERU and stormwater and sewer rates, which are held by bond covenant, where the fees generated from those can only be used for the specific purposes. The flood protection program, state and federal funding, 49 million in state and 37 million in federal. So those are contributions primarily by VDOT to be used for specific projects. The special services district funds, about $5.4 million. Those are additional taxes collected for very specific purposes, whether they be for neighborhood dredging of navigable waterways or through the Sandbridge SSD. Fire grant funding, 300,000, and then other miscellaneous revenues that are specifically for projects. So after you discount those, you're left with a local revenue contribution, CIP of about $250 million. But then you can do a further dive in that the dedicated funding amounts is about 18.9 million. That includes outdoor initiative, the open space, the parks and rec contribution to the CIP, which is funded through their dedication for maintenance of the rec centers. And then there's another category I broke out separately, dedication of funds, our dedicated funds bonds, meaning that they're program bonds, which have not been issued yet. So the debt service, once issued, will be the responsibility of funds with specific dedications in place to cover those. So if that $68.9 million were to go away, it's just a future cost avoidance. It's not a real reduction that saves revenue at this point in time. And then the schools' allocation to their CIP totaling $63.8 million. So if you discount all of those, the remaining city local revenue support of the CIP is about $102 million. And then the green section down there is just the makeup of the general fund source. So top line, $39 million in debt. Second line, general fund pay go to the CIP, close to 27. And then the third being general fund fund balance. So you'll notice that the fund balance is about $35.5 million. Large part of that is attributable to, you often hear whenever staff talks about, we budget for vacancy savings in the following year CIP. Large part of that 35 million is associated with the repurposing of those vacancy savings. So then the question might come up, well, where's the 102 million go from that point? So there's really six CIP sections that compete for the general fund resources allocated to CIP. It's building and assets, coastal, economic and tourism, information technology, parks and rec, and roadways. So roughly about 24% of the total $418 million is associated with general fund contribution that's spread out across these six sections. And for additional context, I mentioned a roadway project earlier. If you really think about that 102 million, that's roughly the cost of basically constructing a road, maybe two roads within the city. So there's certainly a lot of competition for those resources. And the determining factors that determine which section gets that is really dependent on a host of variables. So projects are driven by their construction timeline and needs. Projects have local funding obligatory grant matches. So for example, VDOT, if they're providing state and federal funding to a project, there's often a local match requirement where necessitating local funds stay or go to that project. So we're not in violation of our agreement with VDOT. Project timeline acceleration has been occurring in recent years due to the possibility or potential of failure. Couple of that come to mind is Little Island Fishing Pier. That was an emergent need that popped up over the last couple of CIPs. And earlier, I mentioned the central plant loop. Need to be mindful of maintenance must-dos versus maintenance backlogs. So maintenance must-dos are those projects, like I said, that'll pop up that have an emergent need, or we have to do this over the next couple of years to avoid this possibility. Whereas the addressing the maintenance backlog needs might be, well, we know we need to get to those windows on that building. However, we have this as a more emergent need. So the maintenance backlog ends up getting kicked out, and the queue starts building. And then just, you know, for additional awareness, like I said, although it's a six-year CIP and the year one is the appropriate amount, there's a need to plan out those resources for all six years. So juggling all these challenges is an exercise that takes place for each of the six years of the program CIP. So with that background and context, I was certainly happy whenever city council had the discussion of wanting to have a CIP-focused retreat this coming winter, where, you know, the expressed desire outcome would be able to help navigate these difficult challenges that we're experiencing in the CIP. And the desire would be to get some sort of actionable plan that could be referenced in the development of the upcoming CIP budget for city council's consideration. So some of the questions that might be considered as part of helping navigate this and providing this guidance could be, what are the priorities? Where should staff focus efforts in allocating these limited resources? Are all the programs and projects included within the CIP the priority of this city council? And are the areas of focus not included within the CIP? Or are there areas not included in the CIP that should be? So I know the CIP is a lot of information to digest, and so we're well aware of that. And so format for possible consideration for city council to consider could be, in the coming months leading up to the retreat, receiving several briefings related to each of the CIP sections. Section managers would come up and provide city council a project-by-project breakdown of what the projects are, their purpose, and what the need is. This could be, not only as a refresher for city council, but also informational for the public to get informed as to what these projects are. Something that we'll be able to do, based on this project, this proposed timeline here, is we'll be able to provide city council with updated project estimates as they're being reviewed by the projects, by the project managers and the section managers, and being put forward for budget and city manager's consideration as part of the budget process. And I said, the CIP is a lot to digest, so it certainly is. So what we'd be proposing is to find a way to segment up each of the CIP sections into digestible buckets. And what do I mean by that? Helping to sort through the projects that city council has a little bit more discretion and might have a little bit less pain in redirecting some of the funds from that project, if that was the desire, or, or increasing if that project was a desire. And so what do I mean by those with less pain? Let's pick the coastal section, for example. The coastal section doesn't have a whole lot of projects. However, a lot of the projects within it are covered through SSD rates. So what we would be able to do as part of these presentations is help group these projects and isolate some of that noise that could otherwise be a little bit overwhelming to navigate through without that, without that bucketing in that direction from staff or input from staff. That will allow the projects, like I said, with the most, least amount of pain, to be considered for city councils, consideration of potentially redirecting or establishing as a priority project or not. So I've mentioned the VDOT projects earlier. Those are ones where some of those roadway projects have a grant match obligation on them. And so even though it looks like there's $50 million on the project, perhaps only $5 million of that is city funding. Whereas if you were to delay that project, it would result in sending some of the funding back to VDOT, and the city only saving ultimately $5 million. Some other consideration will be that section managers and project managers will provide a scoring of each of the projects within their section for city council to consider as input in their discussion. So at the conclusion of those briefings in early December, we would then ask Fountainworks to reach out and start working with individual council members leading up to the retreat to gather council members' input on the information of the CIP information they were briefed on, what their priorities are, where they see perhaps gaps, and what city staffs recommend are, where they see perhaps gaps, and what city staff's recommendations were as being priority projects. And then over the course of December, gather that information, compile it, and use that at the retreat as a avenue to facilitate a conversation with the, with the whole body. And then based on the input and the feedback and the conversation from city council, based on that exercise, they would then provide that information to staff, which we would then hope to be able to utilize in the development of the FY 2526 CIP to be presented to city council for your consideration. And I know that was a lot of information. CIP always is. But I'll be glad to turn it over for questions, discussions on the topic.
I like the plan, especially the part about early, you know, getting it out to the public in, you know, in segments. You know, it's a lot that you want at one time. So I think that's pretty good. Barbara?
Well, I think one of the most important parts of your presentation was this early line. And it's just so obvious that what has happened in the past few years, well, you see, those first years, it just stayed right along the norm. But then when we hit the pandemic, especially for those two years, 20 to 22, that's when we had those spikes. It looks like it might be coming down a little bit. But whatever happened, and I think so much changed with the pandemic. We didn't know anything. We didn't know if we were going to get any money for people were going to be able to pay their taxes. We saw that was the year we just set the budget aside, wasn't it? We didn't do anything. We didn't hire, because we just didn't know. And it's almost that we kind of need to go back and see, what are those projects that, obviously, there were things that couldn't get built at that time because there was not the money for it? Have we tried to kind of recapture and then prioritize from that point on to see what didn't get built that maybe we should have? Or how are we looking at this, whatever happened there, to get things back to some kind of norm?
That's the hope of the information to be provided to council through these briefings. We've asked section managers with bid data and information across all the various sections. Project managers have a pretty good sense of what the market is now for to develop, deliver some of these construction projects. Council member Henley, your point related back to the pre-pandemic, previous practice is we would budget, and when projects were appropriated, they would carry a 10 to 20% contingency on that project. Historically, that was enough to allow them to get through the bid, get construction underway. And there was that, that would cover that buffer if the bid was a little bit over. Even though the contingency has stayed on the project, it hasn't been enough. So the need to go out and appropriate or transfer funding to those projects is because the contingency is just insufficient to get the project out the door to construction. So what we've asked project managers and section managers to do is go down each of these projects and touch each one of them and provide updated projected estimated cost on what they think the project would be to get out the door to bid in the current construction environment.
And I think, you know, we look at the schools as being probably the thing that we see the most. I mean, we almost look at the fact that to modernize some of these schools, it's far more than the original cost of the school. And so it's almost a we just can't do it kind of thing. I don't know. I'm glad to see things are kind of coming down and maybe leveling off a little bit, maybe it will get back under control. But this whole issue with CIP, and you know, what we wanted to do, whether, and of course, now we've got all the bond referendum projects in there that we're committed to. And that's when everything went kafue. And in addition to doing the schools and the roads and so forth. So I think we're going to have to really do some individualized looking at each project, as you say, and kind of determining which ones are the most capable of being done as, as the most needed too. I mean, you've got to have the need in there. So I'm glad you're doing this CIP in preparation to the budget, because I think it's, it's pretty serious. I know in talking to some of the folks with the schools, you know, they, they look at the schools they wanted to be modernizing now, and if there any hope for doing it, they're so costly. So it's really an issue that it's going to take a lot of careful looking. And I think maybe trying to figure out if there's something that might be in, in the future that will change and bring it down so that we know which ones we can wait on a while or something. But that chart, Amelia's really telling.
Hey Amelia, Patrick, do you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And it's also important though that it's leveling off. And as Kevin mentioned, it's compounding, right? So it's not going back to where it was pre-pandemic. It's basically just raising a lot higher than where we originally were, where we're supposed to be if we didn't have the increases, you know. And the one thing we're going to try to do, councils, we're going to try to be able to, and Kevin tried to articulate it with, let council understand which one will be the most pain to remove. We're going to try to be able to get, put, give it to council in buckets to be able to say, these ones probably aren't likely for you to stop, but you can if you want to, but this will happen if you stop them. These are the ones, council, that you might have some flexibility in terms of not doing a project, or redirecting, or delaying the project, or something like that. Because council needs to be eyes wide open, because there are going to be some things in there that we, in the current revenues that we're getting, or the current policies that we have, that we may not be able to do, right? Unless council makes other policy decisions, you know. And then there's going to be new priorities that we hear from the council members that aren't in there that you are going to find that y'all want in there. And then there's going to be that push in, pull in, the competing for the resources. And we're going to have to figure out how best to articulate that, taking into mind affordability for the taxpayers, but also the needs to modernize assets or recapitalize assets and/or do the new things that we feel like we need to do for the public. And so this is going to be a very pivotal retreat, I think, for us. And kind of let's set the groundwork for years to come.
It's just so obvious. Well, this happened at the time of the pandemic. I mean, pandemic, I think it's kind of leveled off, but we're still apparently not reacting to the changes to get back to the way it was all those years when things were leveled.
Amelia?
Well, I wanted to thank you again for especially what you have right up there is what I was going to point to, because this gives the layman a feel of the construction, especially this one. And you mentioned, how much percentage again compared to?
Oh, the cumulative? I mean, it's, it's double. It's 100%.
About 100%, okay. And then I think it's very important where you mentioned about format for consideration, going through the buckets and doing this. And of course, I don't think it's going to go back, where that's the reality. So working with this, taking it in sections that each person, not only us, but the public can understand, because the more information they have, then they can understand what you all are dealing with as a city. I mean, it was a sticker shock for me when I looked at the 264 interchange, 300 million. So now we have to look at it with partnership with the state. So just as an example. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, what we're not going to do as part of this initial briefing, there won't be a briefing specifically on the flood protection program until, until December 3rd.
Correct, December 3rd.
So we're going to separate that one, because as council knows, there is a gap in between that one. But we are going to have a specific briefing on December 3rd to separate that one, because as council knows, you lockbox the funding, right? You know, so we are mindful of that. So when you see that, just focus on the CIP as the CIP, not taking into account the flood protection program, because we're going to have a separate briefing for you all, because the funding's lockbox, to deal with that one separately and give you some options that we want council to consider as it relates to how best to address that. You know, so if you see that, don't feel like we're not giving you that information. But we do have some time allotted on December 3rd that we're proposing to go over the flood protection program, but also talk about the stormwater ERU that we've been mentioning. We might need to get council to possibly look at that again. We're going to try to talk about the flood protection program and that in the same meeting. So you can kind of have the information at one time, you know.
Hey Rosemary and Michael, and then Worth.
People often ask me what, and I'm sure all of you the same question, what's the biggest issue, problem facing our city? And my answer's been inflation. Inflation is just eating us alive. And it's, I think this is the biggest problem that we're really facing. When you look at Elba Road, the Elba Road project doubled for a mile, 102 million for a mile. I mean, it's crazy.
Michael Limworth.
Patrick, I just have a question based on what you shared about the flood protection program and the lockbox. And I don't think you'll agree, you'll disagree with this in any way, but aren't, isn't it all related? Because yeah, the, true, the funds are lockbox for flood protection, but, but also it falls far short of our needs. So as we contemplate what CIPs to move forward and to invest in, and what are the priorities, we still have that delta to address. And that has to be a top priority because of the commitments we, we made through the bond referendum, and that people are relying on us to deliver on this flood protection program.
I would say, Congressman Blue, you're absolutely right. We're trying to compartmentalize it to, to give you digestible chunks. But ultimately, when you get to the CIP retreat, the conversation is going to be holistic, right? You know, so there are some opportunities from what we're seeing to address the flood protection program within the lockbox. But I don't think it's going to fully cover that gap. And then when we have the holistic CIP retreat in, towards the end of January, then we'll look for that policy guidance on how best to address that gap, you know. And, and we'll talk that out in options that council may want to give us to consider that. I do think with the flood protection program and what you see in, in December, and we're not finished with the completed staff work yet, so I don't want to get ahead of it. It'll give some breathing room that, that if council feels good with it, they can authorize us to move in that path. And then it allows us to see if there's going to be capacity for additional breathing room for years to come. Once you see it more in December, you kind of be able to get it. But you're right, ultimately, when we have the council retreat, you're going to give us, we're seeking guidance on a holistic view on the entire CIP for us to bring forward for your consideration in the budget process. And then when you adopt the budget, it will cover the whole entire gamut of the flood protection program and all the CIPs, roadways, and for IT and all the other ones as well.
Thank you. It sounds like you've been doing some good work on flood protection. I can't wait to hear about that on the 3rd. Thank you.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chale for the presentation. I just got a couple of comments and a quick question. In terms of the inflation conversation, just so the public knows, and we all understand, it's understandable that we did fall short on budgeting because we did not know the future compounding, as the city manager says, of inflation. So it's understandable that we're way off on our predictions in the CIPs paid out over three, four, five, six years. So that's understandable. That being said, I do think that the Federal Reserve and times that we live in now, inflation is down 2.1%, 2.2%. And core inflation is about the same. So going forward, I think we should be pretty good in our predictions. But we still have a lot of ground to cover from the past. So just a quick clarification point, did you state that we're going to be short in this fiscal year on CIP? Did I misunderstand a comment on that? Are we going to be short? If we just?
I think, Kevin, it's one thing to make sure we clarify. You're never short, because you have to balance the budget, right? You know, so it's similar to what happened in 23, 24, where if, if things need to get out, council has to make them get out. Like when we had to drop the nine CIPs, right? So you'll never be short, but they're still carried in the program as not funded or not fully funded, right? But what we need to do is probably start to right-size those expectations. Like, are we really going to fund some of these projects that have a significant fund balance on them? If we are, council, what's going to be our plan for that, right? Because we're wasting staff time and staff resources by keeping, I mean, also setting expectations with the public that we probably need to reset, you know. Or if we're, or if we're going to talk about changing the revenue paradigm, for example, are we going to look at, relook at dedications? Are we look at, are we going to take, are we going to raise revenues or something like that? Those are the kind of conversations we need to have, Kevin.
No, I think, did that answer your question, Captain Mar? Okay.
Okay, anybody else at this point? You know, thank you. It's a challenge ahead, but we'll be ready for the discussion and, you know, tackle you. Thank you very much.
Sir. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last presentation will be provided by our planning staff. It's, it'll be a briefing on the pending planning items that'll come to you at your next voting meetings.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm here this afternoon to brief you on the planning items for consideration at both your November 12th and November 19th city council hearings. First, looking at your November 12th hearing, there are a total of three planning items for consideration. Item one is a modification of conditions request for Kemsville Christian Church, also known as Kemsville Church of Christ, located at 5424 and 5432 Parliament Drive in District 1. The site is just shy of seven acres and is zoned R10 residential. The applicant is seeking to modify the conditions of a conditional use permit for religious use, which was first approved by city council in 1964 and which has been modified several times since. The current request is to incorporate 5432 within the boundary of the CUP, and then to construct two additions to the existing church building located at 5424 Parliament Drive. One addition will be approximately 12,000 square feet and will be used for a multipurpose area. And then the second addition will be approximately 900 square feet and will accommodate a new entry for the church. Along with the proposed additions, the church will also undertake a comprehensive renovation to the exterior to update the color palette to a more modern palette and more modern, modern materials. While 65 existing parking spaces will be removed with this proposal to accommodate both the additions as well as add additional green space to the site, the site will continue to exceed the parking requirements that are established in the ordinance. The applicant is also providing a 10-count bicycle rack on the property to support the goals of the active transportation plan. Since just north of the site, it does lie adjacent to Phase 1 of the VB Trail. Additionally, additionally, various right-of-way improvements are proposed with this project to include widening the sidewalk along Yoder Lane to a minimum width of five feet, and then various improvements to the existing ADA ramps on site. Staff has not received any opposition to this request, and the planning commission did vote to recommend approval by unanimous vote. The second item is an ordinance amendment to permit eating and drinking establishments by right within the RT1 zoning district. Currently, this use requires a conditional use permit in the RT1 district, and then has further requirements, one, to allow or to require alcoholic beverages be served, and then that the restaurant must exclude persons on the basis of age during any part of the day. This amendment would remove the need for a conditional use permit as well as limit those aforementioned restrictions, making it a by-right principal use within the RT1 district. The RT1 district was intended to provide areas that could accommodate high-density hotels and related needs adjacent to the boardwalk and oceanfront within the resort area. During the adoption of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code, OR for short, most of the RT1 zoned properties were rezoned to OR. However, there are five remaining parcels currently zoned RT1, two of which are city-owned and lie within Rudy Inlet and North Croatan. They're at the bottom portion of the slide. And then there are three properties under private ownership along Winston-Salem in what is considered the Marina District of the resort area. As stated in the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, the Marina District is envisioned as a place for mixed-use redevelopment to include restaurants and other uses that are compatible with the adjacent areas. While the original context of the RT1 zoning district may have warranted the additional requirements for restaurants, staff does not feel that such limitations continue to be necessary, given the limited number of remaining such limitations continue to be necessary, given the limited number of remaining RT1 parcels. Furthermore, our comprehensive planning staff did review the amendment and confirmed that it would complement the context of the resort area and Marina District. This proposal was reviewed by and received support from both the Planning Design Review Committee as well as the Restaurant Association. Staff has not received any opposition, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of the item on their consent agenda. The final item, which was deferred at your October 15th hearing, is an ordinance to adopt and update the Urban Forest Management Plan and incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. The 2023 update will supersede the 2014 plan, which is already adopted by reference in the comp plan. As was discussed in the October 15th briefing provided by Parks and Rec staff, the 2023 update to the Urban Forest Management Plan maintains the goal of preserving and expanding the city's urban forest to include achieving a 45% tree canopy coverage by 2045. Since you received the briefing by the experts last week, I'm not going to go into any further detail on the plan. I believe, well, if you have any questions, we can get answers from Parks and Rec staff. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their September hearing and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to one. Moving on to your November 19th agenda, there are a total of two items for consideration. The first is a CUP for a cemetery along Indian River Road within District 2. The applicant, the Catholic Diocese of Richmond, is requesting a conditional use permit for a cemetery with other accessory uses on approximately 16.8 acre proposed parcel along Indian River Road. The proposed parcel is split-zoned AG1 and AG2 and lies within the interfacility traffic area as well as the 70 to 75 decibel noise zone. The applicant has initiated a land swap with the city to convey two parcels owned by the church along Salem Road, and that will be also considered at your November 19th hearing. As shown in the hatched area on the exhibit on the slide, the applicant has included a right-of-way reservation on their concept plan that shows the future realignment of Indian River Road. Access to the proposed cemetery will be from Indian River directly across from Bridle Path Lane, and the applicant has designed the site to accommodate a future entrance should the Indian River Road realignment take place. A BNP is proposed at the front of the site, and there is also significant landscaping provided throughout the site to provide a park-like setting. Additional buffering has been provided along the property lines as well as that right-of-way reservation. As I mentioned, the site does lie within the interfacility traffic area, which calls for agricultural production or other low-intensity uses within this area. And again, as I mentioned, it also lies within the 70 to 75 decibel noise zone. This proposal is considered compatible with both the recommendations of the ITA as well as the ACU's ordinance. Staff did receive one letter of concern from an adjacent property owner. While they did not object to the use, they did have concern about the visual impact of the cemetery on the use of their property. We have not received any opposition to the request, and the Planning Commission did vote eight to zero to recommend approval. The second and final item on your November 19th agenda is an ordinance to adopt and incorporate the Local Road Safety Action Plan 2024 into the city's comprehensive plan. As you may recall, Katie Shannon and Rick Loman with our Public Works Department provided a briefing to council on the details and the development of the plan at your August 27th informal session. As a quick reminder, the Local Road Safety Action Plan is a comprehensive roadway safety plan designed to improve the safety for all road users. The plan helps to give the city an understanding of the types of crashes occurring along roadways and uses that data to establish a locally focused plan for city staff and leadership in order to make informed and prioritized safety decisions for the city's existing roadway. The plan was developed in compliance with DOT's Safe Streets and Roadways for All program and will help in identifying safety improvements for future state and federal grant funds. I do see Katie Shannon here today in the gallery, and she's available should there be any questions specific to the plan. This item was presented to the Planning Commission in October and received a favorable recommendation by unanimous vote. And that does conclude my briefing, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions at all? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good stuff.
It's good to follow the CIP discussion.
That was an easy one. We end on a high note. Okay, any, you know, council comments or suggestions? Rosemary?
So, last Wednesday, the Historic Preservation Commission was so honored to be invited to Captain Joshua Apizado's home. He's the commanding officer of Oceana, as you all know, and he lives in the historic bell house that was built in 1808. And he had the Historic Preservation Commission come, and he and his lovely wife had a nice little wine and good food for us, and then gave everybody a tour of the house, which was absolutely really fascinating. And no one on the commission had ever been in the house before. So, it's about a 4,500 square foot house. And guess what? They do have jet noise, but it was really a wonderful thing that the captain did for us.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to compliment the entire team of folks who have been working on the issue of the homeless encampment as well as the votes that have been moored throughout various parts of District 3 recently. It's been an extraordinary response that I think has been led by compassion and by kindness, but also by an understanding that the integrity of our neighborhoods and safety of our neighborhoods and perceptions around all of those issues by the folks who live in the surrounding neighborhoods is also of paramount importance. And I just think it was a very reasonable, but also forceful, response to a pervasive issue that we confront. And I think the manager and city attorney, the Virginia Beach Police Department, the Hightower Center, Parks and Rec, the Sheriff's Office, and countless others, as well as Mike Provost with the Vessel Disposal, Senator D. Steph, Delegate Feggins, and a variety of others came together, first and foremost, including the surrounding neighbors, to compassionately address a very serious issue. And I hesitate to say it's fully resolved, but I would say that it's, that it is being addressed in a very, in a way that I think is, reflects on the goodness and also the strength of our city. And I really want to compliment everyone involved, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else at this point, Mayor?
Yes, I am passing around the resolution. If you gave one to Ms. Councilwoman Ralph as well. For you all to look at. Over a while, I've been, as part of, working with many of the Virginia African-American history people and communities. I sat with this young lady, well, she's 93 years old, but as you can see, this resolution where her family were pretty much, that first to move to this road, which was just a dirt road, and she and her father and all of them worked together putting oyster shells that would go to the market just to keep it passable. And over time, they had 12 children and 10 survived, and they still all live along this stretch. But around 1960, where the city came for doing paving, as the family, living as farmers, helping in the community, very active in the church, as you can see, and as steward, it was named General Street, which was a big disappointment to this entire family that lived, because sometimes that happened, whoever is the biggest person to talk out in there. And one of her wishes for the family is to be able to have it as an honorary name. That means the street will not change. Everybody who lives along there will still have General Street, but just like we had Martin Luther King, a little bit under, would at least reflect the times that they've, you know, lived there and in some way give honor to that family. So I have spoken with our attorneys. I've spoken and looked at all the possibilities, and he says this is the best way, because otherwise than that, everybody's street has to be, you know, changed. So that's what I'm putting this resolution. Hope if I have support from you all that on, and she's from the New Light, which is Chief Hutchinson's district, that we'll have that and maybe have the family come. And she has contributed a lot, and she says having her father make sure they got educated, and she's been honored in her own way. This is one last wish. I don't know, next year when I'm here or what, but I'd love to see something like that. This is what this resolution is about, and I'm hoping you all will support me on this.
I think it's very commendable. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Barbara?
In our agenda package, we had from the city manager, the staff report on the open space committee, Interfacility Traffic Area Committee, and the letters that you have received from them in regard to the briefing we got October 1st. I think you'll probably be hearing from other advisory groups, because many of our advisory committees have followed this, and I think they have done a lot of work in looking at these recommendations and wanting to give you the feedback. And I think it's very important we get the feedback from these, these citizen groups, because that's the whole purpose of what we were doing with this, this plan. And of course, the master plan itself is a proposal for an implementation of what has been in our comprehensive plan all these years, but now a way to accomplish these things. And of course, just a broad presentation about what could be there and so forth. And I think continuing to look at this area is very important as we go through the comprehensive plan update, as well as our CIP budget. In fact, you know, we do address it at this particular time. But this, the sentence about what the potential estimated total cost of that plan would be, 161 million, that's what we really feared would happen. Of course, the proposal is not that this is something that the city is going to be building. This is something that we're going to indicate what could be built there and what the plan would be, what would be in compliance with the plan, hoping that we're going to be able to develop this as a very active sports district, particularly for sports tourism and the economic impact that that brings to us from the tourists, the tournaments and so forth that they have there. And that we, the hope, of course, is that we're going to be, by showing the plan of what can be there, entice some of the partners who have potential to be there to come forward with their proposals to do the building, that we would be looking at the basic infrastructure cost, but certainly not the building cost. So I don't want anybody to get frightened by that. But I've heard just very good things from people from many different aspects, and I hope we're going to get some more in the next couple of weeks so that we can, including this in the, in the plan update. Certainly, our intent or the intent is not to say this is something the city needs to plan on building. I hope it's going to be done by a lot of the private sector as partners with us.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just wanted to say that the team, the Virginia Task Force 2 is all back. And I don't know if any of you saw the 60 Minutes special the other night, but they showed one in particular, one, one car that had a mom and two children in it that were washed away. And that, our team is the one that assisted with the extrication of that, of that incident when they pulled them out. So there's a lot going on, you know, as far as for North Carolina and Asheville and any of us that have been there, how much we love the place. And I don't know that you kind of, you kind of get numb to all the tragedy of it, but I talked to the assistant chief, I had lunch with him, Mike Prashir, who was on there and the team that was there. And it just kind of brings it home as to how bad it is. The grandfather and father was with them when they realized whose the car was, that it was, it looked like it'd been hit by a semi truck, to be quite honest. It was destroyed. So very sad. On a totally separate note, if you haven't been over to the new police precinct and building, I got a full tour of it the other day. It's an incredible building and everything they've got going on. And the crime lab is second to none, and those folks are rolling up there. But there are also so many different aspects of what PD is doing every day and all day, victim crimes and, and stuff like that, that I just would encourage you, if you haven't been a part of it, it's, it's well worth a couple hours to go see it. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Just a quick note, kind of to follow up what Huch said. Last week, the managers and I went over to Lansdowne High School and for the heroes, or life-saving awards for the fire department. And what's really cool is when you go to, you know, the fire graduations, and a couple of years later, you see these same folks out there saving lives, you know, it's really a good thing and, you know, speaks well. So, you know, congratulations to, once again, our city of heroes. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. Council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
You'll move. Second?
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Blut?
Aye.
Councilman Lee?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we are recessed into close.